Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council regular meeting to be held at 5:30 PM on Monday, May 6, 2019, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call the meeting to order. I'll invite Pastor Mike Servani's from New Hope Church to come up and then remain standing because Cub Scouts Mike Coleman and Lee Meyer from PAC 452 are going to lead us in the pledges.
Hey, first of all, I'd like to say just thank you. Thank you all for your leadership. They're just aren't finer cities than ours and you guys are servants and we appreciate you and it's what prayer is all about when we talk to our Lord. He was a servant and you are servants and we appreciate you. Heavenly Father, I thank you, God, that you're always so good to us and, God, you sent your only Son to serve and today, Lord, we have our leaders of our city here and they're servants, Father, and I thank you for that and thank you that they are willing servants. I pray you would bless them in all that they do, give them wisdom to lead, God, and I pray for our city and everyone in our city and the next generation that's coming behind us, Father, that we would set a good example for them. Bless us that we might be a blessing. We love you. It's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Good job, guys. Yeah, it's like an open book test, you know? We all know what you're going to say and we'll help you out there. Thanks a lot, Mike. All right. Item four, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. I have two cards. Gail Lovely.
Just so everybody's aware, you get three minutes. I'll give you a yellow card when you have one left and a red when your three minutes are up.
Good evening.
Good to see you again, Gail.
Thanks. I notice on the agenda you'll be considering adding a Clear Creek Drainage and Flooding position of person and I want to encourage you to do so. Additionally, I'd like to remind you that this is a long term and constancy of purpose is going to be important, so maybe you want to also think about adding a commission or a board that would extend beyond the length of anyone's term of office because this is a project that will take a long time. That would also allow citizens to know when agendas through agendas and minutes and meetings what's going on and how things are proceeding. So I'd like to encourage you to consider adding a new board or commission to deal with Clear Creek and Flooding and I congratulate you on thinking about adding a person to really be in charge of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. And Brent Aaronworth. Congratulations, Brent.
As many as you may or may not know, I'm Brent Aaron Worth and I'll save talking more next week. I just wanted to take a moment and personally thank a few people throughout this election process. We know how fun you've all been through it. These can be really fun and energetic. I want to thank my family for standing by me throughout this process. I want to thank all the voters who came out to support me as well as the ones that didn't. We keep seeing low voter turnouts in this city and I think it's important that we keep trying to get these up as our population's growing and we need to see these voter turnouts get up, so I think we need to try to find more ways to keep encouraging people to get out and vote. I want to thank the Galveston County for conducting this election and for y'all pushing that because I heard so many people talk about just how great and simple that was and they wish it was that simple all the time, so I think that was a fantastic idea. Lastly, I've accomplished many achievements in my life. This one was just really special to me. He's a 30-year resident growing up here. Winning a seat up there is going to be truly an honor to sit up there with all y'all. I'm excited to bring my charisma, vision, business skillset to this city as we prepare ourselves for the future and like the city mission statement says that I hope to provide the highest level of service to our citizens at the greatest value as a councilman for Friendswood and I thank y'all again. I look forward to serving y'all. Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. Deirdre Brown.
Thank you, council and fellow citizens. I'm here to speak on two issues. One is the election and one is drainage and I think they're somewhat related. I've been a harsh critic of several council members in the past and Carl Gustafson's no exception from that. I did speak up when he made comments about drainage post Harvey. He was one of the few to question and I thought that was very important to keep that issue alive. Councilmember Griffon and Councilmember Hanks helps tremendously on the floodplain map issue and I appreciated their assistance as well. I want to echo the comments of Ms. Lovely tonight about having a permanent subcommittee or permanent committee basically led by citizens working with a council liaison just like any other committee. I also want to thank Councilmember Gustafson for his service to the city and his family's service to the city. I found this last election to be one of the worst parts of the history of Friendswood. Councilmember Scott and myself went through very dirty campaigns as well. I did not know Councilmember Scott before he campaigned for office and I spoke up when I saw there was dirty tactics then, just as I spoke up for Councilmember Gustafson this time. I think our city will be sorry to find qualified candidates in the future if families go under attack and I believe leadership denounces such attacks and I hope all of you will join with me and those in the community who found those attacks to be beyond reproach. Tonight, Mr. Gustafson, I said this to you on Saturday when I voted as well, it was challenging for me to decide who to vote for. You're fully familiar with that, those issues that I had. I want to thank you on behalf of the community and apologize to you and your family on behalf of the community. When people are in vulnerable positions, you can change their life by making attacks, especially with young folks. Ms. Welsh and I had a lengthy conversation maybe eight months ago and I saw even when I attack on issues, how sometimes that can hurt folks. I would just encourage everybody to be mindful of that and to speak out against it when you see it and thank those who do give their time and service. Thank you, Councilwoman Gustafson.
Thank you. Item five, we have a work session, Drainage Subcommittee Recommendations. Mr. Kabiri.
Yes, sir. As Jeff puts the presentation on the, there we go. Council may recall this past month at the April meeting, there was a presentation given by members of the Drainage Subcommittee related to their activities over the last nine months. There was quite a bit of information conveyed to council over a period of about an hour and a half and I put this item on the agenda tonight to give council a little bit more opportunity to go through the recommendations a little more thoroughly and offer any input or ask any questions you may have. There were a total of 11 recommendations found by the Drainage Subcommittee ranging from things as simple as evaluation of future opportunities and issues that may exist as well as concrete actions that the committee would like council to take in the immediate The first item, though somewhat, I don't want to call it benign because it's not benign, but boilerplate, is a simple resolution on the part of council determining that the findings of the Drainage Subcommittee were worthy of action for council to take, that we believe that flooding is a concern in Friendswood and that we do need to take steps moving forward to mitigate potential impacts to the city. So in that vein, there's a resolution on the agenda later tonight for council to vote on that basically outlines that simple statement, that council believes that flooding is of issue, is of concern and that the findings of the subcommittee warrant a call for action or cause for action. The second recommendation related to a lot of work that the city did in conjunction with Rice University. You may recall, we discussed the city hired Phil Bediant, Dr. Bediant, from Rice University to do a drainage model of the entire Clear Creek watershed within and focus on the city of Friendswood particularly so that we can get a better understanding of how rainfall throughout the watershed impacts our community. With the assistance of Rice, a number of projects were modeled and simulated. I will state, these were conceptual in nature, though they were fairly focused on specific areas or specific improvements to either the main stem of Clear Creek or areas upstream of it in the form of detention ponds. These were intended to give us an idea of where the biggest bang for our buck would be realized. So moving forward, if we were to approach a project, where would we get the best return on that investment? A number of the findings of that drainage study determined that terracing helping improve the, not the width of Clear Creek, but the width of Clear Creek above the ordinary high watermark during major storm events would greatly enhance flood mitigation within the city of Friendswood. I will state that these were just conceptual again, so moving forward, we were going to have to do further engineering and scoping to get the full benefits of these improvements. As an example, these are assuming certain terrain modifications at various locations based upon LiDAR information, topographical information related to the land immediately adjacent to the creek. If we were to take a section of this project, let's say from 528 to Bay Area Boulevard, we're going to have to get an on-the-ground survey that truly identifies the full breadth of the topography adjacent to the creek and determine where, how much dirt's going to be removed from that section and then we can fully plug in and get the full benefits of those projects. The other impact of this, or the other benefit from this report is that we can, and I'll discuss this later on during the workshop, is we can start collaborating with various other agencies, partners of us, whether it be Pearland upstream of us or League City downstream of us and start identifying projects that we can tackle within our legal limits to help improve drainage throughout Friendswood. Our main concern obviously is Friendswood. We don't want to be bad neighbors to Pearland or League City, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we protect our citizens. The reason I keep highlighting the term conceptual up there is because these are not fully engineered projects. This is just a 30,000-foot level evaluation of the impact of drainage within Friendswood. The biggest thing that came out of this recommendation is that we need to be working and focused on projects that impact the main stem, Clear Creek itself, and not focusing as much on the other tributaries that are coming into that main stem. Those other tributaries are managed fairly well with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District and the Harris County Flood Control District. As a result of those projects identified, there were a number of recommendations that came out of the subcommittee that our Citizens Advisory Team is currently evaluating. These pertain to projects directly on the creek that involve things such as de-snagging the banks of Clear Creek. You may recall Galveston County Consolidated and the city of Friendswood have partnered to the tune of $3 million total, 1 million the city's share, clearing and de-snagging on the Galveston County side of the creek from 528 all the way to, sorry, from 2351 all the way to 528. Recently, Harris County Flood Control District is also doing a similar effort, though not as robust, but doing similar clearing and de-snagging from Dixie Farm south to FM 528 on the Harris County side of the creek. We talked about elevating bridges throughout various cross-sections of Clear Creek from Dixie Farm to Bay Area Boulevard and in the evaluation by Rice, we determined that the biggest bang for our buck when it comes to bridge elevations were 2351. As each of these projects were identified, we put pen to paper based upon other experiences that agencies such as Harris County Flood Control District or the city of Friendswood saw directly in similar projects and determined what the probable cost for these projects would be. Based on those findings, we looked at grant opportunities that were out there either with the Texas Division of Emergency Management, whether it was with the General Land Office of the state of Texas or whether it was with the feds themselves, cost-sharing opportunities that are out there to pursue these projects. At the end of the day, we had made a recommendation to council and to the Citizens Advisory Team that we want to pursue $32 million roughly worth of drainage projects involving Clear Creek. That 32 million did not represent the entirety of the project. That 32 represented seed money that the city would need to put forward to find partnership opportunities with other agencies. Those partnership opportunities ranged anywhere from a 25% local match to 10% local match or whatever those, whatever may be there. The recommendation was that we need to pursue this over the next 10 to 15 years. Realistically, it may be longer than 15 years, but we needed some money so that we can have some skin in the game when we're approaching other agencies to pursue this. And I apologize, I should have asked. Feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have any questions related to any of this stuff. This was probably one of the most nebulous components of the effort simply because it's an estimation of what these costs of these projects would be and it's an estimation as to what grant opportunities are there. Each storm event is followed by a slew of grant opportunities and fundings that come from the federal agencies based upon the most recent storm. So what we saw following Allison varied drastically from what we saw following Harvey. We had, for instance, from a buyout proposal in Allison, we bought out 137 properties in a matter of six months when we started our application. We are now going on close to a year on another buyout application following Harvey with no end in sight, so I can't promise that the next disaster, and there will always be a next disaster, what the strings attached or what the timelines look like for those events, but this was our best effort at determining what matching and partnership opportunities would be there if the city had money of its own to put forth in terms of drainage improvements. We estimate roughly $173 million worth of projects to greatly reduce flooding in Friendswood, but it won't fix everything. That was just our estimation.
Mo, do you believe that $32 million is enough? Because I've heard some other people thinking that that might not be enough for what Friendswood needs to raise.
Well, I want to answer that in twofold. One, we can always use more money. The 32 million doesn't completely remove everybody from a Harvey flood, so from that perspective, yes, it would be great to get more money to tackle these projects, but the greater concern is there's a limitation to what we can do with these dollars. So as it stands right now, we can't use tax-backed debt to pay for projects outside of our city limits. So if we're looking to increase the 32 million to something larger than that for projects outside of Friendswood, I can't support that simply because I don't want to put the city in illegal bond moving forward. However, if you're talking about increasing that $32 million to do more projects in Friendswood, then by all means, we can find great opportunities for those dollars. We also have to weigh, though, the other demands that exist out in there in the city, whether it's with facilities and with transportation. A number of y'all are, you see firsthand the issues with congestion throughout our city in your daily commute back and forth to work. And then there's also the impact to our taxpayers. So there's always so much that you can leverage without unduly burdening those citizens. So I don't know if I directly answered your question, but, yes, sir, and if we go, we're eight years down the road and we see that we've already spent the 31 million, but we've made great progress, we can always go back to the citizens and forth another bond election.
Maybe you could comment on how that number could show up in the, on a ballot, let's say. You could kind of look forward a little bit down the road and talk about how that number could show up, let's say, we got the recommendation back to put this on the ballot in November and we have this number going in that we, you know, we think is a pretty good number, but, you know, past history, we ran out of money to finish Black Hawk, you know, which was another bond election that we estimated the cost for and by the time we finished the project, concrete and all those other things have gone up in price. Anyway, maybe you could just say a couple of sentences about how that number actually ends up, you know, in ballot language.
Sure. Well, the ballot language, and it hasn't been written yet, but it would be fairly broad in that it would say $32 million worth of projects along the Clear Creek drainage system within the city of Friendswood to tackle flood mitigation projects. The projects themselves will not be enumerated on the ballot. It's not going to say terracing from Dixie Farm to another location. It's going to say for flood mitigation efforts. Simply put, as those grant opportunities present themselves in future years, you don't want to hamstring the city to where we cannot pursue a project that's not quite meeting the definition of what the feds may have established. If, for instance, for instance, the feds say, you know what, we'll widen Clear Creek, but we limited it to just simply terracing on the ballot, then we would not be able to spend a penny of those dollars on widening the creek. So you want to have some level of flexibility in that process. That being said, from when the ordinance is passed to held a bond election in November and when the election actually takes place, there's going to be a number of educational materials produced that are going to further enumerate what those projects would entail. So we're going to try to, from staff's perspective and ultimately council's authorization, stick to as closely as possible to those educational materials because that's what we're telling the citizens that these funding, these funds are going to be used on. So there's going to be some flexibility in the bond language. The other aspect of this is we don't know exactly when the funding opportunities or when the partnerships are going to be, present themselves. So the 32 million, I can tell you right now, won't fund everything. So if we start seeing the feds wanting a greater percentage of local dollars put towards efforts, then 32 million won't be enough, but if we see a trend in which the feds are willing to take up a lion's share of these projects, then 32 may be just fine. The intent is to issue the debt as these projects and these partnership opportunities come up. So we're seeking the authorization now, but if it takes year seven to where the feds say, you know what, we have a terracing opportunity in which we'll cover 75%, that's when the debt will actually be issued, so it won't impact our taxpayers until it's actually issued.
We would be asking for permission to borrow $32 million for flooding projects, but we're not going to borrow it all on the first day.
Correct.
We're going to borrow it as we need it to put towards projects.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Another thing to keep in mind, too, is that they come in, you know, maybe we thought something was going to be a 10% requirement. It comes in at 30. We do have the ability to go to the county or to go to the state and ask them to chip in also, so the full load of having to be the sponsor on this thing can be shared with other entities as well.
And to, yes, ma'am.
So I have a question about the estimated cost of projects. Are those in order of best benefit? Or any kind of order at all?
They're not in order. They were in order in which Rice evaluated their effectiveness, but they're not in biggest benefit or no priority order. The reality is the de-snagging is underway now, especially on the Galveston County side, so a large part of that's going to be tackled here fairly shortly. The biggest benefit of all the projects listed on the screen there is the terracing that we saw in Friendswood.
One thing I wanted to comment about the project list and these numbers you see up there is that this was the outcome of the subteam as a group. We worked as well as we could on consensus, but no one on the team got everything they wanted. You know, what we did is we spent a lot of time on this and Carl can echo this, of trying to figure out what is the right package, what is the dollar numbers that are effective and this was a team decision to come out with this.
You've heard it here earlier during the communications from the public, mention of hiring an additional staff person to head up drainage concerns and to be that constancy of purpose, to be that individual to carry that football across the goal line for us. Historically, we've operated with only one professional engineer on staff and as of right now, I'm technically the city engineer as well, but we've seen outside of Harvey, we have enough demand, daily demand from an engineering perspective, to have two professional engineers for the city of Friendswood. We're considerably behind the eight ball when you compare us to other agencies and then when you look at the workload and the projects that we have going on, we definitely have the need for another full-time professional engineer, too, in addition to myself. My intent is not to be doing daily engineering activities, but when you take into consideration Harvey and the need to oversee the improvements that we're recommending, whether the bond approves or is passed or not, we need somebody dedicated to overseeing the drainage needs of this community. They will be doing other engineering activity associated with their daily demand for the city, but we definitely need somebody that their predominant makeup of their job is to see the drainage needs of this community met.
And it's a legitimate question to ask, is do you bring this person on before or after you pass your bond, but the reality is that whether the bond passes or not, we have to up our game in terms of dealing with Clear Creek and we have to put the resources in to do it. So the bond passes, that provides the project money, but even if it doesn't, we still need to do this. This is something that we had a deficit at in terms of our own city managing this and I think we need to fund this position.
Another recommendation you're going to see later tonight is the discussion about upping the city's drainage criteria as it comes to new development within the city of Friendswood. If you look back over the history of Friendswood or the history of coastal regions, following any tragedy, there's usually a push to increase the drainage criteria or to develop some criteria. Prior to the mid-'90s, the city had absolutely no drainage criteria when it came to mitigation. You basically had to store within a two-year event within the roadside ditch or the storm sewer system of a project and there was no detention requirements. In the mid-'90s, the city, along with other agencies in the region, adopted drainage standards for the 100-year event and required detention requirements bolster the 100-year event. Since Harvey, the city has adopted the latest and greatest flood insurance rate maps for the city of Friendswood, both Harris and Galveston Counties, that raised the bar when it came to development criteria for properties that are currently in the floodplain. In addition to that, the NOAA established new rainfall intensity curves for our region. So previously, where 14 inches of rain over a 24-hour period constituted a 100-year event or a 1% storm, which is our current drainage criteria. The new 100-year event has gone up to 17 inches over the same 24-hour period, so the intensity of rainfall has increased. In some respects, some of the data shows that the new 100-year is the old 500-year. So a recommendation, if council's in support, my recommendation would be taking, directing me to go back and evaluate the merits of increasing our rainfall intensity curves to reflect Atlas 14 NOAA's study and beefing up our detention requirements when it comes to new developments. So we can't undo what was done in the past. Our efforts to fix those issues are to tackle projects along Clear Creek, but we can try to stem any impacts of new growth within the watershed by increasing the detention and drainage criteria. Recommendation six was fairly related, was related in large part to the earlier recommendation about tackling projects along Clear Creek. If we're going to do any terracing or we're going to do any shelving projects along the creek, we're going to need the property to achieve that. If you were to look at Clear Creek throughout Friendswood from Dixie Farm all the way to Bay Area Boulevard, there are a number of properties either the city has in its possession through tropical storm Allison and buyout. Either we have it through easement through the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District or we have it through fee and title through the Galveston County Consolidated or Harris County Flood Control District. We've identified there's a number of properties that still need to be acquired. So when you talk terracing, the initial recommendation out of the Rice study was that we have a 200-foot terrace above the ordinary high watermark on both sides of the creek. When we apply that terracing to what properties we do own and where development currently is, we're going to try to move that terrace from one side to the other to minimize the impact of having to take out structures, take out homes, because we want this to be as least impactful as possible. But this is not going to be a one-and-done, like this year, I need $30 million to go purchase the remaining property of Clear Creek. The intent is to pursue buyouts through annual programs that exist in areas where there are no homes, there are no structures, and working with those property owners to get the large part of the terrace located on their property to remove any impacts to other properties. As an example, Mardian works with the church for the Woodcombe property to avoid wiping out sections of Polly Ranch to, since there's undeveloped land just on the other side of the creek, to take property that's already within the floodway to pursue the large part of that 400-foot terracing, 200 feet on the other side, move the lion's share of the 400 feet to the Harris County side so that we avoid impacts of property acquisition. Recommendation seven has to do with the flow of water within Clear Creek. Recommendation seven has to do with the flow of water within Clear Creek. Both this recommendation and the later one talk about impacts of improvements and our impacts to the Clear Creek based upon changes in the watershed upstream of us. Historically, Friendswood hasn't been a leader in this regard. We've been involved, much like every other agency was involved when it comes to drainage within this watershed, but everybody was looking solely at the 100-year event and their area of responsibility. In order to get the funds necessary to pursue these projects, we need to become more of a, take a more leadership role in organizing consistency and partnerships with other agencies, both upstream and downstream of us. Having that additional engineer on staff will help greatly in this regard to be able to tackle their daily duties into going and meeting consistently with these other agencies and moving that ball forward. We just recently received the final report from Rice University. Now that we have it in place, and assuming council gives me the green light, we're going to take that study on the road and start meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We promised them in advance that we'd share the findings of this report with them. The Harris County Flood Control District's chomping at the bit to see this report and see the findings, as well as having area meetings with Pearland and Lake City and the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, so on and so forth. We've already had initial meetings with those other agencies, but now that the report's final, we want to take the findings of the report and share it with them to see if there, if areas that we can't, for instance, you want to say terracing outside of our city limits, well, that's a project that Lake City definitely can tackle with their dollars. Maybe we can save them some heartburn and some, uh, some study dollars by showing them the results of our study, and they can use that as a starting point to move that and down that, down that road. Number eight, recommendation eight involves a variety of proposals that have been made, both at the county and state level. There is not a single authority over the Clear Creek watershed. There are over 26 agencies, either local cities, utility districts, drainage districts, so on and so forth, that have some skin in the game when it comes to Clear Creek and its impact to the drainage within this watershed. There have been proposals to create additional layers of government and additional layers of taxes to have an authority to oversee development within this watershed and to be the regulatory agency. Nothing that's necessarily gotten a whole lot of traction, but what this recommendation was, to evaluate those recommendations as they come up, or those proposals as they come up, and see which ones would be of a good fit or benefit to the city of Friendswood. I would encourage working with the agencies that we currently have. We have a steering committee that's got everybody that's got any stakehold in Clear Creek, just stepping up our game there. If it's an issue of funding, maybe have, talking with the other agencies about increasing the dues so that that particular committee has a little bit more autonomy in tackling partnerships, in tackling projects, and in tackling studies to move the ball forward and in the development also of a, maybe a master plan for the watershed. Recommendation nine, I had mentioned it earlier in this presentation about not looking backwards. We don't achieve anything by going back and trying to get redress Pearland or redress Lake City or anybody else, or redress Friendswood for that matter. Everybody did what, they all followed their own rules, they all designed the 100-year event since the mid-'90s. The impacts of growth within the watershed is just a fact of nature at this point. The creek in Clear, the creek in Pearland was straightened long before any of these cities ever existed as we know them today, and so going back and looking at the past doesn't achieve anything. So, it's the recommendation of the subcommittee as well as myself to not go back and try to redress any other agencies. Item 10, I will say that we've done quite a bit of work on, we being the city of Friendswood and the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. There have been a number of projects that have been tackled since Tropical Storm Allison in 2001 that have greatly enhanced drainage capabilities throughout the city, as an example.
Can you talk about some of those?
Sure.
Because I was concerned about Analia and some of those places that I know that have flooded multiple times that were included in this.
In 2005, following the 2003 bond election, the city pursued drainage improvements within the Analia subdivision in Sun Meadow and Glen Shannon. All those neighborhoods, there were still two or three houses in Sun Meadow that flooded, less than, I want to say, less than, less than probably 15 total in Analia, Kings Park, White Hall, whereas prior storms in Claudette and in Allison, a couple hundred flooded. And Glen Shannon, no properties flooded during Harvey. So, these local drainage and projects that were tackled since Tropical Storm Allison greatly improved the drainage capabilities for those subdivisions. In addition to that, the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District did upstream detention improvements along all those tributaries that run through these subdivisions. This recommendation is intended to further that those efforts where opportunities exist, but not necessarily to go forward with the bond election to tackle improvements within those local areas, so.
What about Autumn Creek and Forest Bend, are they all because of the creek, the flooding of the creek?
So, their proximity to Clear Creek is going to take improvements on Clear Creek to tackle those efforts. So, with respect to those two, we have pursued, for instance, back in February this year, we submitted an application to the general land office to do a drainage project in the Forest Bend subdivision, Park. So, we're going to continue to those small projects, but those are on the stem of, the actual main stem of Clear Creek to help reduce flooding within those neighborhoods. For Wedgewood Village, for instance, we're doing a project with the Galveston County Consolidated in which we're donating the land, the drainage district's doing shelving and detention efforts in the old Imperial Estate subdivisions, which is just directly across the street from Wedgew, just directly across the creek from Wedgewood, so that improvement there will greatly benefit Wedgewood. So, we're still tackling these, but we're not recommending that the 32 million be geared toward these local efforts particularly. And finally, the last recommendation was to increase our monitoring along various points within the watershed, not just Clear Creek. This will help better inform decisions during emergency management activities as to where the creek is at what times so that we have better awareness. It also helps in evaluating future studies if we have better data, more thorough data that we can properly evaluate the impacts of drainage as it pertains to Friendswood. And that's it. If y'all have any questions, I can go back and speak up.
So, I would love if each one of these recommendations had had a price tag next to that. Just to help.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I can go back.
But on this last one, are flow sensors expensive? Are video monitoring to put along the creek, is that something that we could just do through a budget? Is that included in that 32 million? Or, I know there's a lot of overlap, especially with the new position.
Sure.
The new position would take care of several of these things or be involved, but for instance, that one and number 10, you know, there are things that the city's already doing with number 10 and the drainage district. What about this one?
So, the 32 million is only the bond projects identified for terracing, bridge elevations, and buyouts.
That other list.
That other list. So, the other projects that are mentioned, or the other recommendations are not part of the 32 million. The, and I'll work backwards. The increased monitoring services, you can spend as little or as much as you want. My intent is to work with Harris County Flood Control District that currently maintains the online database for all these systems and help fund additional monitors at various points that we see fit. We can probably get less, we can tackle that for less than $30,000 total, if not a...
Can I add one thing, too? Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District also has this on their list, so they would be participating in those costs as well.
The, the other items related to, to the recommendations in improving the localized drainage issues, these will be tackled with partnership opportunities with the general land office, with our own operating budget within the public works department. So, we're not talking, and it's going to vary from project to project. For instance, there's a section in Analia at the end of Virginia in which we still had two properties flood, and since Hurricane Harvey, the city has gone in and put a new storm sewer line as well as an inlet above the storm sewer line tying into the diversion channel that cuts across the first Friendswood United Methodist Church property. Granted, I don't want Harvey to happen again, but I would think if that improvement had have been in place, it would have significantly helped those two houses, because the two houses that flooded at the end of Virginia didn't have that much water in them. So, I'm not talking about additional budgetary funds or bond dollars to tackle the localized drainage projects, but those would be tackled on an as-needed basis based on, with either our operating budget as we currently have it or with partnerships with grants that present themselves. The only other recommendation involved in this list that has any dollars attached to it is the drainage coordinator discussion. And as I mentioned earlier, there are other engineering needs in addition to drainage. When we talk about a, and you'll see this in your backup material later tonight, $200,000, that's a salary benefits plus dollars to pursue additional study efforts to keep the drainage model we have with Rice alive and moving forward, as well as other contract services that this individual, he or she's going to need to hire engineers to do some design work or some preliminary engineering assessments, both for drainage and other engineering-related matters. So, long story short, of all these projects, if you take out the 32 million or all these recommendations, you're looking at probably about $200,000 to $225,000 worth of ongoing expended, $200,000 worth of ongoing expenses moving forward on an annual basis.
That's including employing this person with the city?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question there, Mike?
Of course.
Are we still expending dollars with Dr. Bediant?
So, I have spent our budget on that. There's a budget amendment later tonight to finalize the remaining simulation requests that were made following the drainage subcommittee. As it stands now, I don't have any further funds to do any further studies unless council were to authorize additional funds.
So, I think, I think we should, and however we put this on the agenda, do this. I think we should start monitoring that and, and basically not expending any more funds with Dr. Bediant until, until we have our drainage coordinator in place, and then we give them a budget and let them manage it. I think, you know, it's, it was a terrific bargain, we did it, but I think we need to just not keep doing small, keep things and wait for the drainage coordinator. So, I don't know how to do that. Maybe it's just as guidance to you or whatever, and I want to see if anyone else has any other issues with that. Yeah, I think we should just, I will lock down on that for now.
Have we already gotten a report from him?
We have, and I, we have put it on the citizens advisory team's website, friendswood.com/cat, and I'll email that out to council following this meeting. I will say, not to toot our own horns, but you may have seen in the daily news, Lake City recently partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to do a similar study of Clear Creek to the tune of $500,000. Our study, though done predominantly by graduate students with the oversight of Dr. Bediant, was done for 30, at the end of the day, $35,000.
I just want to thank you for walking back through this again. I know we've seen this a number of times, but I appreciate, every time there's additional clarity, and I want to thank you for that. I also would like to recognize Melissa is here from the GLO office, and appreciate her being here. She was on that subcommittee you were talking about, and she's been involved at HGAC meetings, our council meetings, so I feel that the GLO's office through Melissa, Melissa Washington, excuse me, I didn't say her last name, sorry, has really demonstrated that they're here, they're involved, they care, and I'm very excited about that. And I think we are closer now than we've ever been, and I did live through the flood of '79, so I'm showing my age now. I think we're closer now than we've ever been, and in that same article you were talking about, or somebody was, 57 years we've been working on these issues in our area, 57 years, and the Army Corps of Engineers has been involved in all of those 57 years. So, I'm excited, and hats off to that subcommittee and to the city of Friendswood, and I appreciate the hard work, and I am in support of these recommendations that you're putting forward today.
Thank you.
We knew back in June that we needed to do something when we chartered this subcommittee, so I'm getting a little chuckle that recommendation number one is do something.
Just want to get it on the record.
Good job. Yeah, you did. You might have...
Incidentally, in terms of Dr. Bediant, and he had asked us once if we thought, we have to give him the okay for this, but would we okay him to publish what he did for us? We should definitely have him publish it, because then we get, then we can basically point to something in the literature for all this work.
Oh, definitely. Yes.
So, we'll, we've told him we'd be supportive of that.
Definitely. All right. Let's see. Can we move something up? Is there anything we can move up for our executive session?
Director Poole is here to give the library recognition if you're so inclined to move up that item. Item...
Well, if council will allow, we'll, we'll move up. Okay. Uh, present, item eight, special recognition and acknowledgements, presentation of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association's 2018 Achievement of Library Excellence Award by Rebecca Poole, library director at the Deer Park Public Library and past president of TMLDA. Seems like our library gets an award every month. There's a great library.
Good evening, council mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, and the, every year, they hold a, basically, they allow libraries in the state to apply for an award called the Library of Excellence, and there are 10 categories that the library must meet in order to achieve this. I believe this year, there was 51 out of 540-something that achieved this award, so that puts Friendswood in the top 10% of the libraries of the state. And so, a few of the things that they have done, accomplished over this year include partnering with local professional therapists to provide mental health workshops for teens. They have registered 2,074 children to the summer reading program, and there was over 10,000 people attended the summer programs. They partnered with local professions, professionals to provide job search, small business, marketing classes to business owners and entrepreneurs, and they hosted annual events such as the ZakiCon Anime Convention and our second ephrastic, ephrastic poetry reading contest. So, things that many people never heard of, and so they were successful in bringing these things, new ideas, to your community. So, on that, as a past president of the Texas Municipal Libraries Directors Association, I'd like to present this 2018 Library in Excellence Award to the Friendswood Public Library.
Really a team effort, and if we had about 10 more minutes, we'd have a lot more staff here, but I want to acknowledge the few that are here from the board. Mike Zarowitz from our library board, Ted Thomas from our library board, Diane Freeman made it just in time. She's on our library board and our friends group and does a wonderful job with our book sales, so I just want to acknowledge those people. So, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Great job, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Rebecca.
Okay.
Sorry, made you look at me right when she was taking...
Thank you. It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
We'll see you next month, I guess. Okay. Okay, item six, closed executive session, communications from the public regarding executive session topics. Do we have any cards for executive session topics? Council may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.072, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body in negotiations with a third party with possible discussions and action related thereto an open session, park land. And Section 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action related thereto an open session, evaluation of the city manager. We will reconvene here at 7:00. All right, we'll reconvene into open session. All right, we'll reconvene into open session. First thing on the docket now is item nine, which is our joint public hearing. We skipped over item eight because we already did that. So, I will turn it over to Commissioner Matranga.
The Planning and Zoning Commission joint public hearing with city council is now called to order. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding five separate items, first being proposed amendments to Appendix C, zoning ordinance, Section 8.1.1, geographic limits, regarding proposed amendments to the established boundary of the downtown district. Aubrey, can you do the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. So, we worked shop this back in February or March. These are changes to the downtown district, and so, we did break them down into five different categories or ordinances. So, this being the first one is the, to amend the boundary, to include the property located at 110 Whispering Pines. The original downtown boundary was established in 2007 when the downtown district zoning was created, and the boundary was amended shortly thereafter in '08 to expand the downtown district to the creek. Other regulations that use that downtown boundary as a reference include the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, which waives fees for new development, the sales tax selection, and which is the 4B funds managed by FDEDC. So, this is, like I said, just to expand the boundary for that, to include that one additional property.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? If so, please step to the podium. Seeing none, is, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Please step forward. Okay, seeing none, the next item, our proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance, Section 8. F, off-street parking and loading regulations. Aubrey?
So, the item that the committee visited on, or commission visited on this one was our current on-street head-in parking requirement. It's allowed in the downtown district, but currently, it's required to be at least 400 feet from FM 518. So, the recommendation is to reduce that 400-feet distance to 75 feet, which is consistent with the spacing requirements for a driveway from major thoroughfare per the Design Criteria Manual standards. Additionally, staff drafted some changes in relocating language for clarity and duplicating parking requirements that pertain to the downtown district, to the section of the zoning ordinance that includes the downtown district regulations. It just, it's some cleanup. It would be easier for staff when we're explaining to developers to have all that development information in one section.
Okay, thank you, Aubrey. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Seeing no one, we'll move to the next item, proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance, Section 7.1 and Section 8.1.4. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. This proposed change is to allow cement fiberboard in the downtown district to reduce fenestration requirements and to institute some of the aesthetic criteria from the community overlay district into the downtown district. So, the recommendation is also to allow cement fiberboard, but installed only as lap siding, not the flat, like four-by-eight sections. Reduce the fenestration requirement on interior sides of the first floors and add requirements to the downtown district that already exist in the COD, such as requiring underground service laterals, earth tone colors, prohibiting garage bay doors from fronting 518 in certain situations, requiring screening materials to match the main structure, and to add a reference to the dumpster screening requirements that we added recently.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, proposed amendments to Appendix C zoning ordinance, Section 8.1.8, Section 8.3, Section 8. H, and Section 7. J, PUD. Aubrey, please?
Yes, sir. These are, again, some staff cleanup items. This is to relocate landscape buffer and parking requirements that apply to the downtown district, to that section of the ordinance again. And then additionally, the planned unit development language was relocated a few years ago in the zoning ordinance, but the modification procedures wasn't moved with it, so it's just a cleanup item.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Okay, seeing none, we have our, our last item, proposed amendments to Appendix A sign ordinance, Section 9 prohibited signs. Aubrey?
This is going to add a prohibited sign to the sign ordinance, and it's to prohibit LED store, and similar storefront lighting within the downtown district boundary. That's regardless of zoning. We're tying it to the boundary. And also included in the ordinance is to require that any existing lighting that violates this requirement to be removed within 90 days of adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making these changes? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making these changes? Seeing no further comments, the joint public hearing is now adjourned.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
Just a reminder for the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission is reconvening upstairs, so if there's anyone interested in those items, feel free to go upstairs to hear their deliberations.
That, that will be our last joint public hearing, because later tonight, we're going to, I think, vote to make, make joint public hearings no longer a thing. We'll meet separately. So, you witnessed a little bit of history there. Resposing, yeah. I got a couple of you in my pocket. I don't, maybe. Communications from the public, item 10, to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. John Cole?
For those of you coming up, you have three minutes. I'll give you a yellow card when you have one minute left and a red when your three minutes are up.
I would like to read from the 217, 2017-18 budget. Basically, this refers to the city debt that we're in right now. Right now, we have 228 full-time Friendswood employees who work for the city. Some of the employees' salaries include, but we're not limited to, the city manager, 529,500, assistant city manager, 166,000, fire marshal, 186, deputy fire marshal, 164, deputy director of community development, 132,000 plus, administrative assistant, 70,200, public works director, 189,200, administrative assistant, 72,300, building official, 105,200, senior sign tech, 87,700, meter reader, 62,006, director of library services, 139,000 dollars a year, assistant city director, 89,000, library clerk, 69,000, recreation director, 178,000, assistant director of recreation, 125,300, recreation manager, 174,300, parks building superintendent, 113,400, foreman of the parks, 88,000. For each employee, there's 14 days paid vacation, 14 days paid holiday. In other words, one month of paid holidays and vacation per year, and these totals tonight do not include the benefits for each one of the employees. For example, or so in other words, a 12-month salary for 11 months' work for a city whose debt is over $85 million. The budget was $56 million for 2017-18. Approximately 70% of the budget was used on personnel, which equals approximately $39 million. Eliminating one half of the 39 million equals 19,500. If this amount is applied to the city debt for five years, after five years, Friendswood will be a city out of debt and will be, and will function from a budget surplus. And lastly, this is directed towards those city council members who called me a liar when I first presented the budget deficit or the city debt of, over $80 million. I have the budget from the city website that explains that the salary for the city manager was over $500,000. Thank you.
Whoever that guy was that just left, he made a good point. City administration is well-paid, but I was, I was here back in January, and I made comments about the roads in my portion of town from FM 2351 to the city limits. Now, what is really remarkable to me is the way cities, states, counties, and federal agencies block our freedoms continuously, for whatever reason. I asked at that time that something be addressed about the repairs to Rustic Lane from FM 2351 to the city limits, Westfield, Clover Ridge, and all those other little streets in that I called two or three people with the city about what was going to happen, who was going to, I even sent the mayor a letter, got a real nice letter, you know, "Thank you for writing me," et cetera, back. That was good. Our taxpayer money is for these services to maintain our roads, and our roads, all the way to the city council, I'm sorry, to the city limits, are not properly maintained and haven't been maintained. That picture, those pictures that I'm sending around there, those are pictures of Brazoria County and how well they have taken care of the roads that go all the way up to my, actually, my property line. They did a real, they've done it three times in the last 20-some-odd years. City of Friendswood has not. Our tax money, our taxpayer money pays for the services. We still haven't gotten it. And I'm, I'm not sure if there's any pictures of Rustic Lane specifically, but after every rain, you can take pictures of it, and it puddles in the middle of the road. Lousy maintenance by the city. Again, taxes is, is paid, and I just paid them. And last, how much time, about a minute? Okay. I also made it a point to talk about the no right turn at FM 2351 and onto Sunset Drive. Well, that's been modified. It was just modified not too long ago. I wonder if y'all knew that I was going to come and talk about it. And last, I want to reiterate again, the Christmas lights that I saw on this building and other, other buildings that belong to Friendswood, those Christmas lights were beautiful. The Christmas lights celebrate a religious event. This is not a religion. This is a political entity. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak on drainage again. I had forgot to mention before that I have reached out to some of you about better communications with Harris County and better teamwork with Harris County. I think it is important to perhaps, you know, do an invite with a Friendswood Day where we invite our elected officials from Harris County, as well as Galveston County, but in particular with a new county judge and Commissioner Ellis not really hearing from our elected officials much. They've obviously heard from us at the grassroots level. But I am now getting direct communications from Commissioner Ellis, saying, please go ahead and promote this. So, that shows me there's kind of a disconnect at the city level as well, and I'd really appreciate if somebody, perhaps the mayor would be the best person, reach out to the county judge and Commissioner Ellis and invite them for a drive around town, just like we do with a broker day tour, let them tour the town. I know I came down through Black Hawk today and saw his parks that he controls, and we also have Frankie Carter. There's definitely interest in this area. We just, I think, need to let them know, after decades of not communicating with Harris County, that we need their attention too. Thank you.
I'm here to address you in regards to an aspect of our community that might need your attention at your next retreat, and that is my request. This would be in terms of our code enforcement, that meeting with staff this past couple of months, we find some lacking language perhaps, that would help us all strengthen the jobs that the employees do for us in their jobs every day. I met with Murad and Ms. Fisher and, I forget who else, and Melinda, in regards to the efforts that are already made to enforce the, the sign ordinance, but we need some teeth in the language, and we need some tools given to the code enforcement officer to do these particular jobs. It's not pleasant, I know that, but if we're going to spend $67,000 for Keep Friendswood Beautiful, I think we need to continue to do it in all aspects of what exists in our community today. I give you a note, there are 183 days, that's three days more than six months, before a candidate can place another sign in our city for the required 90 days of the state election, which will be the primary May, March 3rd. So, I would ask in that retreat that we do address it. I'd be happy to help you with any of the aspects that need strengthening, that support staff. Melinda already says how much she does in regards to it, but she could use some help as she works through with the candidates. One of the language requirements that we have gives a cloud about if a sign is found to be illegal, that we give 10 days for its removal, but yet, in the sign ordinance, the day after the election, all the signs have to be removed in 24 hours. So, that was one recommendation that we found that could possibly be utilized to make the adherence to the ordinance be a little bit quicker. I did note in our budget that we allocate 500 cases in sign enforcement department. I can't tell you what the budget is for that because it's mixed in with inspections, so perhaps Murad could let us know that, but that's an expectation of complaints to that department. That seems like a lot. Perhaps we could start to become proactive and more enforcement-oriented rather than reactive and be just a complaint department. I know that as adults, if we're fined, we tend to take something a little bit more seriously. That's my address to you tonight, and thank you.
Mayor and council, I will try to be brief with this. This year, we recently completed yet another Spring Sparkle event that was a huge success. Keep Friendswood Beautiful led this, this great event along with our Parks and Recreation staff. We're breaking city equipment as we speak. I'm just joking. Yeah. At the Spring Sparkle event, there were 502 cars and trucks that... of compacted waste, uh, thirty-five tons of roll-off waste. We had sixty-five hundred pounds of electronic recycling through CompuCycle. Uh, Simple Recycling collected almost four hundred pounds of textiles, shredded, destroyed several pounds of paper. I don't have a final count on that, and we raised three hundred thousand in the garage sale that will go towards beautifying our various parks and city facilities. Uh, the Bay Area Wildlife Rehab picked up animal habitats and donated them to the benefit of injured wild animals, um, to make their homes in Friendswood's various green spaces at our parks, and, uh, we'd like to thank, obviously, the city for its, uh, support, but, uh, more particularly, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, Parks and Recreation Staff, Waste Connections, Clear the Air, JSC Credit Union, and Sonic. Um, coming up later this month, we'll have our annual Memorial Day cer, ceremony over here at, uh, City Hall at the Veterans Memorial, directly to my left of City Hall. Uh, there will be a guest speaker and a ceremony involving patriotic music and, um, tributes to our various armed forces throughout this nation. All local veterans and the public are invited to attend the ceremony. It'll take place at ten AM that Monday morning, and there will be a group photo for, uh, veterans at the end of the ceremony. It is a very much, uh, great event in which we honor our local heroes, and I'd encourage you to attend. The Mitch and Arthur Wright Concerts in the Park series was to start this past Friday. Unfortunately, the first one with, uh, the area high school bands got canceled due to the weather. I think the, as soon as we canceled the event, it decided not to rain anymore, so, and I, I apologize for that. Uh, all the concerts in the parks, parks will take place here at Stevenson Park at the gazebo, uh, starting at seven PM and, uh, end roughly around nine PM. Uh, folks and attendance can enjoy music ranging from pop rock, funk, Latin blues, and zydeco. Bring your blankets, lawn chairs, and refreshments, and enjoy the festivities. It's that time of year again, we're getting ready for the hurricane season. Uh, this week is actually Hurricane Preparedness Week here in the state of Texas. Our emergency management personnel and others are preparing for the, the upcoming season. Um, it's an excellent time to remind folks to be prepared, develop plans for your household, uh, know your evacuation plans, if you get separated, where you intend to meet up, so on and so forth. Uh, encourage folks to get, uh, two or three-day supplies of non-perishable goods within their home to be prepared for, uh, such an event. Uh, the annual Hurricane Preparedness Meeting will take place with, uh, city staff, various agencies and utility contractors that we work with on an annual basis, as well as some upcoming public preparedness meetings that will take place at the library. Uh, the first one is scheduled for May thirtieth at ten AM, the second one is June sixth at six-thirty PM, so we'll offer both a daytime and an evening, uh, meeting with the public so those that are interested to please attend. Keep Friendswood Beautiful is undertaking their annual photo contest, uh, so folks are encouraged to take various pictures throughout the city that resemble Friendswood and its beauty and submit those on social media with the hashtag #FriendswoodProud on Facebook and like the Keep Friendswood Beautiful Facebook page, or email your photos to rec@friendswood.com. Uh, the photos will be judged on their creativity, their quality and composition, and how well the photo demonstrates the essence and beauty of Friendswood. Uh, the winners will be announced at the Schools Out for Summer Concert in the Park on June first here in Stevenson. Uh, also related to Keep Friendswood Beautiful, Keep Texas Beautiful just recently named KFB, uh, our gold, received their Gold Star Affiliate designation. This is granted to eighty-five affiliations of Keep Texas Beautiful out of nearly three hundred, so we're definitely honored that we have one of the best, uh, KTB affiliates here in, in our own Friendswood. Uh, Hurricane Harvey, we continue to work with FEMA representatives that we're, we haven't finalized a number of projects related to, uh, our old Deepwood facility, Public Works and Parks facility, as well as the buyout programs, continue to, the languish. We are, have been in communication with both our state and federal representatives to help get those items moving along. At this point, all of our applications are with the feds, and we're hoping for a conclusion here shortly. Lastly, if, uh, council will indulge me, um, earlier today, our officer Carlos Corneo was net, recognized as the Officer of the Year by the Fifty Club of Galveston, um, for his efforts as a police officer here in the city of Friendswood, so I congratulate Carlos for the wonderful work he does. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Morad. Uh, if we can suspend the rules again, uh, I'd like to bring up the first resolution in item seventeen A. This is a resolution that has to do with CenterPoint, I think. Is there somebody here representing?
Yes.
CenterPoint? Let me read the item. Resolution R. twenty nineteen dash twelve, Resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas, suspending the May tenth, two thousand and nineteen effective date of CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates, approving continued cooperation with Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, hiring Lloyd Goslink attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company, and direct any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of city's rate case expenses. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Discussion?
Just as a reminder, we've taken similar action in years past, and when a, a public utility proposes an increase in their rates, we're simply intervening and asking for additional times to evaluate those, that rate increase to see if there's opportunities to reduce the magnitude of that raise.
Okay. Any questions for our representative?
Uh, no, I was not. I was, um, here to, you know, um, if anyone has any questions, you can email them. I left my card with the city manager. If you have any questions, I'll direct them to the proper channels with the company. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thanks for being here. Find my place. Thank you. Back to item twelve, Communication from Committees and Special Reports. Fourth, Fourth of July Steering Committee Annual Report Given by Vice Chair Barbara Blanchard.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. It's my pleasure to represent the Fourth, Fourth of July Steering Committee again this year. On Thursday, July fourth, the committee and the city of Friendswood proudly present the hundred and twenty-fourth annual Fourth of July Celebration. This year's theme is "There's No Place Like Home." Excuse me, the day begins at ten AM with the grand parade featuring over a hundred entries from Friendswood and around the state. This year's, we're honoring as Grand Marshal Alan Rasmussen, Senior Executive Vice President of Hometown Bank. We choose him for his overwhelming generosity in supporting all events in Friendswood, the city, the Friendswood ISD, oh, thank you, um, and the chamber, you made me lose my train of thought. After the parade, in Stevenson Park, there'll be rides, games, food, live entertainment, and more than fifty booths until three-thirty. Excuse me. Um, the evening program is at Centennial Park and begins at seven-thirty. Starting at six-thirty, we will have our Free Shuttle service from Friendswood United Methodist Church and from the Friend, Friendswood High School. The entertainment for the night will be the Molly Ringwalds. Uh, following up this entertainment, we'll have the Fantastic Fireworks Extravaganza, choreographed to patriotic music. For more information, or to sign up to be in the parade, or have a booth, call the Parks and Rec Department at two-eight-one-nine-nine-two-three-two-two-zero. We would like to thank this year's committee members, excuse me, Chair Tommy McDonald, Anthony Christine and Stacy Scarpa, Michelle Biacek, Stace, Stephanie Karakoskas, these are two Scarpas that got married, Daryl Fails, Rafino Ramirez, Terry Corbett, Kathy Molinaro, Terry McKee, and Renee Rives. The Friendswood Chamber of Commerce Liaison is Diane Haas this year. Our city council liaison is Trish Hanks, and from the Parks and Recreation Department, the director, James Tony, and his wonderful staff, Michael Boyett, Kimberly Ramirez, Heather Whitty, Katie Blanchard, Cole Mendenhall, Gary Williams, and all the park staff. I am Barbara Blanchard, I am the vice chair of the committee, and I thank you for giving me your time.
Thanks, Barb.
Thanks, Mo.
Okay. Item thirteen, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approving an Appointment, Reappointment to the West Ranch Management District Board of Meredith Levine to a four-year term ending June first, two thousand and twenty-three, to replace Frank Harper, whose term expires June first, two thousand and nineteen, and the reappointment of Sawyer Blackburn to a four-year term ending June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Item fourteen, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Approval of Membership to Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership.
Uh, second.
Motion in a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Could you explain to everybody, um, what this is and what we're paying for and all that?
So BayHEP, uh, we stepped away from BayHEP a couple of years ago. Uh, they, uh, they charged dues to be a member. Um, at the time, we, we decided to, to take a break, uh, didn't renew our membership there. Uh, we were treating them more like an economic development, uh, piece. Uh, they really don't do that. They're really an advocacy group for the area. They, they, uh, definitely, uh, go out and, uh, talk about this region to businesses, to, to companies that are looking to relocate. They do a lot for us in, in the way of bringing people to this area. Uh, in the past few months, even though we're not, uh, we're not paying members, I've been a member of the Mayor's Roundtable, uh, that BayHEP, uh, organized. All the mayors around the lake, uh, meet, uh, about monthly, and we have done a lot, uh, in regards to, uh, writing the resolutions, signing resolutions, and sending them to the state legislation on, uh, issues that we have problems with, that state's doing. So from an advocacy, uh, point of view, they're, they're very good with that as well, and I think behooves us to, uh, to sort of pay our dues, you know, they are doing a lot for us. Um, I, their, their director is a guy named Bob Mitchell, and I met with him last week and asked him what, uh, our dues would be to come back in, and, uh, I think he gave us a pretty reasonable, uh, rate to come to rejoin, so, um, our dues would be fourteen thousand dollars a year, uh, and I think, uh, worth every penny for the advocacy that they, they do for us, so. Probably more than you wanted, Steve, but that's how I feel.
I've, I've been involved with BayHEP for fifteen years, and I haven't seen a lot of economic development in Friendswood, uh, because of them, but I do think that they strengthen the region. And when the region is strengthened, we benefit by the people who can move to Friendswood, by the nice, nice houses that are being built in Friendswood, and volunteer and contribute to our community. So I think we should have a seat at the table, and I think we should try to work to keep our entire region, this area especially, strong. So I'm in for it. I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Well, uh, Mayor, Council, I went to, uh, Galveston County Day, and included in my group was Larry Milliken, who's city council in League City, uh, Scott Livingston, Economic Development Coordinator with League City, and Bob Mitchell. And, um, I found him very engaging. I had never met Bob Mitchell, and, uh, we went to visit several senators and, uh, also, uh, staff, and when he advocated, he advocated for the entire region. He didn't exclude Friendswood from that, so, uh, to tell you the truth, I liked him. So, I'll, I'll support you on this one.
Okay. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item fifteen, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Termination of a Joint Agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for Election Services.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second.
Can we explain?
Morad, you wanna, Melinda, you wanna? I didn't give you a heads up, Melinda, I was gonna ask you.
That's okay. For many years, we've had a joint election agreement with, uh, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, um, and since we are now contracting with Galveston County, we will no longer be able to provide those services. So they will need to contract with Galveston County as well, if they choose to do so. So we need to formally end our agreement.
Got it. Okay. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item sixteen, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Implementation of the Recommendations of the Drainage Subcommittee. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second.
So earlier this evening, council, you heard, um, me go through a presentation of all eleven recommendations from the Drainage Subcommittee. Um, three of those recommendations are before you this evening. The first one is a, a resolution later on tonight. Uh, the other two recommendations that I wanted to discuss with you was, one, beefing up our drainage criteria as it pertains to development, new projects, new development. I don't have the full data here yet because there's quite a bit of work that's involved in updating the data or the criteria. I want to make sure that council's on board with, uh, with advocating for greater mitigation and drainage requirements as it pertains to new developments, uh, namely, from the standpoint of the rainfall intensity curve for our region adopting the higher standard by Atlas fourteen through NOAA, um, which would require a greater amount of onsite detention for new projects. So currently, as it stands, if you develop a piece of property in the city of Friendswood, whatever flow in cubic feet per second come off that property during a hundred-year intensity storm cannot be altered and cannot be increased post-development for a one-hundred-year storm. Obviously, if you were to increase the amount of rainfall per hour as it pertains for a one-hundred-year storm, then that requires a lot more mitigation onsite. So beefing up the standard helps work both ends against the middle to reduce the impact of new development within the watershed on, uh, on Friendswood. This is something that's going to be done in joint partnership with other, uh, agencies within the watershed. Obviously, if we put our, hold ourselves to a higher standard, but those, uh, those round us do not, uh, we're unduly impacting ourselves, but, uh, if there is interest on council's part, moving forward, I would like to, to move that legislation forward. Uh, the other aspect of this is, uh, hiring additional engineering, uh, assistants. As I mentioned earlier tonight, we have, historically, we've had one professional engineer on staff dedicated solely to engineering activities within the city. Uh, our workload has increased sufficiently to where a second professional engineer on staff is needed, um, separate from drainage, but especially when taken into consideration drainage concerns. Um, this individual would be the, the person to further or the constancy of purpose to see these, these projects, whether the bond passes or not, see the drainage improvements furthered within the city of Friendswood so that we can minimize the impact of future storms within our community.
Any comments? I think we're all in, in agreement with the city manager on all of these. Looks like he had something to say.
On, on both items. On the first one, um, I, I, I think it's a great idea. There will be more of this, though. I think as time goes on and we work with other cities, we're gonna, we're gonna have to think about continually increasing standards, but we have to do it with other cities. But going at least to matching the current, current hundred-year standard just makes sense, but it's not the end, end for this. This will continue to come. And on the second one, I, I believe that having, having somebody that's watching our interests for drainage, continually watching the city's interest is a must, is a must. And it, and it's, it happens regardless of whether a bond passes or not. I think we have to, we have to have this, uh, this resource in place, so.
So it's for the position for, uh, increased standards for drainage, and what's the third thing?
Those are, the third thing is the resolution later tonight, simply, yes.
Okay. Okay. So, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, getting into resolutions, we did the first one. Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, authorizing and approving the two thousand and nineteen Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program Application Combat Casualty Care Training. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Brian? What are you gonna spend this money on, Brian? This is grant money.
Yeah, and.
Combat Casualty Care Training?
We haven't got it yet, but this is just showing support. We've put in for several grants to Homeland Security and UAWC this year. This one, uh, got paperball reviews from the UAWC Committee. Uh, they used the funding source from last year as kind of a, a line where they think they're gonna get funding for this year. They've asked us to go ahead and put this in for the full grant application and also to get support. Uh, it's for casualty care training, basically for firefighters that are not paramedics or, or EMTs, and also for police officers, for those mass casualty or active attack-type scenarios, so they can go in and, and help with those incidents.
Questions for Brian? All in favor? Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Resolution 2019-14, resolution of the City Council of the city of Friendswood, Texas, affirming the Drainage Subcommittee's findings that Friendswood is subject to high-intensity historic level of flooding events caused by Clear Creek being incapable of containing watershed rainwater within its current banks, sustaining a cause for action to pursue mitigation activities to better position the city for future flood events.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
As Mo said earlier, I just want to say that it seems a little pro forma, but, you know, our team felt like we really wanted the Council to say, did we present enough information to make a cause for action? And that's the reason for this.
Okay, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Resolution 2019-15, a resolution adopting rules of procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Friendswood, Texas pursuant to authority contained in Section 2-3 of the Code of the city of Friendswood, Texas, and repealing Resolution Number 2010-09.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Resolution 2019-16, a resolution of the city of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris Counties endorsing the reappointment of four members and the appointment of one new member to the Galveston County United Board of Health.
Us?
Motion to second. All in favor? Ordinance Number T 2019-11, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 115.998 acres located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes Subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential to planned unit development for a residential development Avalon at Friendswood.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion to second. It's the second reading. Anyone want to discuss it?
Yes, I do. So, I made, I made the point at the last meeting and still didn't win the vote, but the development that's going in is a single-family residential development. So, we have requirements for single-family residential lots. The PUD is a way to circumvent that requirement. They're not developing anything outside of single-family residential. That's all they're doing. Every council member up here, including the mayor, said they have way too few 90-foot lots, but we still voted for it. I don't understand why we allow single-family residential developments to circumvent the requirement on lot size. I would guess that the PUD in the original sense was created for people to develop garden homes or senior living facilities or things of that nature. I doubt very seriously that it was intended to circumvent the lot size requirement in the city of Friendswood. For eight years, we've told every developer but one to go away and come back when there's 90-foot lots, including one very recently, and they accommodated our request and went back and put in 90-foot lots. So, I don't understand why we have a single-family residential ordinance requiring a lot size, and then we allow ourselves through the process to circumvent that. There's nothing outside of this development that's anything other than single-family Every one of us expressed a concern with the fact that there only 7% of those lots are 90-foot. Every person up here expressed that concern, but only three voted against it. I think if we have single-family residential requirements, we should stick to them. I think that it is a responsibility of the government to be consistent so that the developers that come to our community to develop their properties know what to expect. We have a requirement to do that. It's frustrating to me when we're up here and we don't know from one meeting to the next which way this development or that development's going to go. There shouldn't be any "yes" in it. It should be consistent, and we've been consistent on the eight years that I've been up here with the exception of one time. 7% of the lots in this single-family residential development meet the minimum lot size requirement that we have laid out. I really, really, really wish, like you did on the development out at Dickinson Bayou, would reconsider your vote and require this developer and every developer after this that comes in to develop single-family residential to meet our lot size requirement.
I'd like to ask a question, and I know I should already have this data, but I don't. I know that right now they're proposing 206 lots. If they had had all 90-foot lots on this piece of property, wouldn't it have been like 211 or 212? What was the number? 232? It was 200.
236 is, I believe, what they provided.
236, okay. So, in reality, they lowered the density for this area, this proposed project, even though I hear what Councilman Scott is saying, they're not 90-foot lots, but they did reduce the density.
They?
For me, that's why I am supporting it, is because they were able to reduce the density from 236 lots down to 206.
Okay, so, real quickly on that. They're reducing the density by setting aside a lot of land they're not developing. That's not reducing density. The houses are going to be stacked side by side. They're 55 and 60-foot lots. That's how they get around the system. We're going to meet the density requirements because we're going to set aside our detention pond and not put anything there, or we may put a pocket park in there, and there won't be a house there, but we'll include all the green space and all the detention in our development for the total acreage and compare that to the number of homes. Well, because that portion is not developed, that gets factored into the equation, which says, hey, we meet the density requirements. The largest value of your home is your land that it's on. We don't have a lot of land left to develop. I don't understand. I mean, you have the last parcels of land, and we're going out of our way to stick houses side by side on them. It doesn't make any sense. What does the city gain by allowing guys to circumvent the single-family residential lot size requirement? What do we gain? I get it. If it's senior living, if it's garden homes, if it's something like that, that makes sense. They actually said they were catering to seniors. Well, then build a senior living facility. Build a senior development and call it that. But that's not what's happening. We're circumventing the system. There's no development going in outside of single-family residential homes, period.
Make a comment here. We are not circumventing any system. It is the system. We have, we have rules on residential lots, and we have rules that allow us to apply variances such as PUDs, like we're doing here. They're not circumventing any system whatsoever. There's no difference between these. These are ordinances. They're paired up. We can look at each piece of property and decide what we think is the best, even all a bunch of circumstances. It's not a matter of looking at one law and not looking at the other. We have this ability. It's not a circumvention.
Robert?
I think everybody knows that I'm in agreement with John. I do not believe that we should move away from the 90-foot lots, and I know that when I ran, the last time that I ran, not this most recent time, when I stood before the residents of Friendswood, I told them that I was going to go for 90-foot lots, and we read the 2020 vision, and there were a lot of people who ran under the same auspices that we were going to go with the highest, with the least amount of density that we could possibly go with, and it was going to be a lot more beneficial for the residents of Friendswood. And if this was a planned unit development for senior living, I would support it, where all the amenities were being shared by all the members of that little community, that would be something I could support. If this was price structured so that it was for millennials, 400,000 to 800,000 are not price structured for millennials moving into these homes. So, this really isn't a planned unit development. It is a subdivision, and they have crammed as many houses as they can possibly get into the subdivision, which is not good for our schools. It's not good for our infrastructure over on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard when it gets built. It's not good for all the traffic problems that we have on 528. It's the highest possible density that you could put on 117 acres or 115.99 acres. So, I'm in agreement with John, and I'm going to do what I told the residents of Friendswood that I was going to do, and I'm going to vote the way that I told the people in Friendswood that I was going to vote. I'm going to vote and stay with 90-foot lots.
Paul?
I'm inclined to agree with John on this. We do have requirements for neighborhoods, and there's nothing odd or difficult or strange about developing this piece of property. Point out, Breakbills are on the property. Connie and David, wonderful people. I just, I couldn't say enough nice things about you guys, and I want you to be able to sell your property. But these PUDs were set up to address square pegs going into round holes, not to find a way to not have to follow rules that are pretty well put in place. The last time one of these came up before us, I did support the change in opposition to Councilman Scott, but in that instance, the developer had some challenges in developing the property. There were some giant old oak trees that he was going out of his way to keep. There was additional green space it was, he was putting in between an existing neighborhood and Sun Meadow and his. There was that big horseshoe piece of property within Sun Meadow. They had to buy and then maintain in perpetuity, and there's a cost to doing that. And he also agreed to give up a big wedge-shaped piece of commercial property out on the main road in deference to the residents of Sun Meadow. And there was cost to him for doing that. And so, I didn't, in that instance, I didn't have a problem allowing him to recover some of the additional cost. He also pulled some apartments off the table that were allowed prior. So, that was a different instance. There's none of this problem with this piece of property at all. We're proposing build-out of 50,000. This is going to add to the dangers of pushing us over that 50,000 number, where suddenly we become responsible for health services, we become responsible for traffic signal maintenance, and a host of other services that we are currently allowed to rely on the county for. It's also going to add impervious cover. We're up here talking about drainage and approving resolutions, affirming that we have a drainage problem, and that we're doing something that's going to add to it. It's, I think we ought to follow the rules we have in the book for developing lots, keep it at 90 feet, and if they can't make that work, I don't understand why they can't. There's, Dan Rucker made it work, a number of other neighborhoods in our city have made it work over the years. The Georgetown folks, as we pointed out, came back, decided they could make it work after all. We don't want to grow fast like Pearland. We don't want to grow fast like League City, and putting this many, packing these houses in like this is going to, it's going to accelerate the growth, and I think we've been growing at a good rate. I think real good things are happening here in the city, and I think they'll continue to happen, but we're going to add a bunch of traffic, you know, that Friendswood Lake Boulevard is going to come through. This is going to add, I don't know. Well, it's going to, yeah, 250 houses worth of cars, so another 500, 750 cars a day, I'm sure, or more will be traveling on there. So, I'm going to vote against it, and I would implore the four council members who did support this last time to please take one last deep look at your decision and consider what the consequences are going to be to the city long-term. Thank you.
So, I called a lot of people about this because I wanted to know, why do we have this ordinance, 90 by 130? Why do we have that? What's the purpose of it? So, I called people that have been here for a long time, that have served on council, that have knowledge, also called Adam Hill, and I said, how do you feel about this if this is passed with you having adjacent property and you've been building houses on 90 by 130? To find out that he supported it and that he actually cosigned that application, right? So, what I gathered from calling and talking to people is that the ordinance was there to reduce density. So, if I understood this correctly, with, if they followed just 90 by 130 lots and forgot about the lake and forgot about other things, there would actually be more houses than what they're proposing right now. So, I said last month, you know, I personally like the larger lots, but people are building such big houses that when you stick them on 90 by 130, they don't look like such big lots. Their backyards are small also. There is a market for that. So, when this ordinance was passed many, you know, decades ago, their times have changed, and people want different things today. And if it's, maybe we need to question even why we have this ordinance anymore. Maybe we need to revisit this ordinance, but if it's truly for density, then what they've proposed lowers the density than if they just followed 90 by 130. I also looked at the people who are proposing this. So, you have the Breakbills, and when I talked to Adam, you know, and he gave his blessing on that, you have families that have been here for multi-generations who love this community and who would never want to do anything to be detrimental to this community. So, I've listened to Steve about, there is a process for doing this. I'm listening to, trying to take all of this in on the opposing view, but my mind and my thoughts are, it actually lowers the density, which was the intent of the 90 by 130. It's different today. Times have changed. People want different things today than they wanted 30 years ago or 35 years ago. So, I'm not struggling with that. I know that Avalon is a good product. You know, you're going to have to pay for those streets. The people that buy that in a gated community will have other issues, and I'm sure all those things, I met with the developers as well, will be worked out, but I'm going to support and vote to support it.
All in favor? opposed? Four to three. Second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix Zoning Section 15 Amendments in Chapter 70 Vacation of Street Drainage Utility or Other Public Easement to Change from Joint Public Hearings to Separate Public Hearings.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Motion to second. This is where we separate our?
Joint public hearings.
Joint public hearings. Any discussion?
Finally make it happen?
I will say yes, but staff made me a liar last month, so, yes, this was the last joint public hearing this evening.
Any question? All in favor? Okay, Ordinance T 2019-14, second and final reading of an ordinance approving the execution of a developer participation agreement between the city of Friendswood, Coastal Bend Property Development LP, and Sur Construction Partners LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. This is the property out, the road out to? This is the property out, the road out to...
On the surface water plant number two, right in front of Timber Creek Golf Course. This is a partnership to improve our unimproved roadway to our water plant to a concrete roadway.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, ordinance number T.2019-17, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8F off-street parking and loading regulations to relocate downtown district-related language to Section 8.N.3 parking, and amendments...
You skipped D.
D, sorry.
You guys could've told me that about 17 words ago.
You were so into it, we didn't have the heart.
Ordinance number T.2019-16, first reading of ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.N.1 geographic limits to amend the established boundaries of the downtown district map.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions for Aubrey?
What did P and Z say?
Planning and zoning recommendation on this was a negative recommendation. It was one to five. There was differences of opinions on change in the rules for, you know, individual property owners, having other options for other commercial zoning changes, and then in favor of zoning both lots as downtown district, and it's not an administrative burden on staff.
What other options do we have for this, Mo?
If council is not inclined to follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee, that's perfectly okay. From staff's recommendation, this is one of the, and I'll speak for myself, this is one of the few areas in the downtown district that doesn't have a logical conclusion or a logical terminus. If you look at the other sections of the downtown district, you have 2351 in one location, you have Laurel, you have Morningside, depending on which side of 518 you're looking at, or you'll have a natural barrier where you're going from an existing commercial or mixed commercial areas to a residential area. This section along Whispering Pines could've just as easily gone one more lot to include 110. It could've gone all the way to Cowards Creek. From staff's perspective, my recommendation is since the 108 and 110 are bifurcated under the single ownership, but two different possibilities for zoning, is that in anything that is developed under a single zoning category, whether that's commercial or whether it's downtown district, is what I would recommend.
So is most of the P and Z's problem with this is that now we're creating sort of a special case that we have to keep track of because we have one that's, we can not ever apply downtown district funding to? Is that...
Yes, sir.
Is that the real hang-up?
From staff's perspective, that's not too difficult. We already have two different empowerment zones for the downtown district, original empowerment district that went to roughly Castlewood, and then the section that was added from Castlewood to Cowards Creek down 518. We have a variety of ordinances in place that have different requirements for different areas, so we can just as easily flag this in the system.
The neighborhood, well, it would be up to Economic Development Corporation, but that's a resolution that could be easily amended, so I mean, that, you know, we could do away with that conflict, so.
For me, the most important thing was since this is actually being sold as one piece of property, I realize it was considered two separate pieces. I think it's important that the zoning be the same on both, so that was the reason I was gonna be supporting this. And then I also agree with Mo that the line there, if we ever had a case for extending our boundary, I think this is the case for that. And if it's not an accounting nightmare for the city, we're not putting undue burden on the city, then I just don't see any reason why we shouldn't move forward with this. So I'll be supporting this.
Steve.
Yeah, similarly, it's, the piece of property has a piece of property behind it that's in the downtown district right now.
Correct.
Sort of a wedge-shaped one, has that Reach Church and all that that's on the one side. Property owners want it to go into the downtown district. It's not gonna be a hassle for the city to manage. The property owners are long, long-time Friendswood residents. I just don't see the downside to doing this.
Anybody else? Carl, John, any comments? Okay. All in favor? Sorry, P and Z. Now I can do D. Is that right? No? Ordnance number T.2019-17, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.F off-street parking and loading regulations to relocate downtown district-related language to Section 8.N.3 parking, and amendments to reduce the head-in parking distance requirements from 400 feet to 75 feet, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion to approve.
Motion to second.
This was a unanimous positive recommendation by planning and zoning.
Any discussion? All in favor? F. Ordinance number T.2019-18, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 7.I and Section 8.N.4 to allow cement fiber board installed as lap siding in the downtown district, Section 8.N.4 to change the administration requirements in the downtown district, and Section 8.N.4 to restate that service laterals must be installed underground, prohibit garage bay doors from fronting FM 518 in certain situations, limit exterior building colors to earth tone colors, require that screening materials match the main structure, and add a reference to dumpster screening requirements, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
This was a unanimous recommendation by planning and zoning as well, six to zero.
All in favor? Golf. Ordinance number T.2019-19, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Section 8.N.8 adjacent property buffer maintenance and installation, duplicating requirements for buffering from Section I.2 perimeter landscaping, and amendments to Section 8.N.3 parking duplicating requirements for parking from Section I.2.C off-street parking landscaping, relocating language PUD modification from Section 8.H modification of standards proposed within a PUD to Section 7.J PUD Planned Unit Development General Purpose and Description, including minor grammatical corrections.
Motion. Second.
P and Z's recommendation was unanimous on this one as well.
Unanimous? All in favor? Hotel. Ordinance number T.2019-20, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A signs, Section 9 prohibited signs to prohibit LED and similar storefront lights in the downtown district boundary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
P and Z's recommendation was unanimous on this one as well?
Anything you can see from space should probably not be allowed in downtown. All in favor? India. Ordinance number T.2019-21, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting Budget Amendment VII to the original general budget of the city of fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, item 19, communication from the mayor and council members. Steve.
We have a couple of items. The first two, the first one is, I've noticed that the street that's going into the property behind Starbucks has been built. That street makes that, is gonna make that a two-way traffic, and it is gonna be a mess. People line up and are gonna be in the wrong lane, going through the carpool of the Starbucks. People already park on the other side so bad that the bank has to hire a police officer to keep them out, and you see cars stopping and people running back and forth. Anybody coming out of that new development in the right lane is gonna have to swerve into the left lane into oncoming traffic. I understand all the reasons that that was considered a public street, but I'm just here to say, we are creating the world's most gigantic road rage situation, and we are gonna get somebody hurt. And I believe that we should, you know, I'd like to ask that the city look at that and come back with some recommendations that will greatly improve the safety there, so just a request. Similarly, you know, the nice brick sidewalks that we put in front of City Hall and Stevenson Park are literally marked from stem to stern with what's called utility graffiti. Utility people put these hieroglyphics on it, up and down it, and constantly putting them over again and over again and over again, and it looks terrible. Absolutely terrible. Now, again, I understand the safety aspects. They have to, they're doing lines and all that, but I really wish we could look at something that would require a paint that could be taken off easier. I mean, it takes a year or two for that paint to wear off, and by then, they've put these symbols down five more times. Next time you go down, look at that brand-new sidewalk we put in there and how bad it looks. It just looks terrible. So, again, I would ask that we look at, talking to the utility companies or figuring something out that we can just, you know, it just ruins the look of the park. And the last thing on a positive note, we had the May the Fourth celebration at the library. It was really well attended. I think they had, over the normal number of people that come in on Saturday, they had six or 700 more people come. A lot of them were kids in costumes. They had a great time. It was a terrific event, so.
Thank you. Sally?
I'll just be short and sweet. I wanted to let everybody know that the month of July is gonna be very exciting, and not just because of the Fourth of July. We're gonna be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Apollo 11 splashdown, which technically is July the 24th, but the library and all kinds of folks all across the community are getting involved in helping us with this celebration. And if you think about it, NASA's pretty much what put Friendswood on the map, so I think it's very, very appropriate that we are celebrating this, and we're gonna celebrate it right. So I just want to invite anybody and everybody who's interested in participating in this, reach out to me, Steve Rocky, Mayor Foreman, Brett Banfield. We'd love to have you join us. James Tony's gonna help us out. Matt Riley's gonna be helping us out, so we've got lots. Jeff Newfer's gonna be helping us out. I'm calling out all your names right now, so you're all guilty. No, it'll be a lot of fun, and we'd love to have as many folks as possible participate. It'll be a month-long celebration of NASA. Thanks.
Trish.
Okay, I'd like to compliment the two committees that I serve on, CDC and the July 4th. You heard from Barbara tonight. Those people do a fantastic job, and they work well with James and his staff, and they've got this down. They have got this down, and I really applaud them. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work that day and the night before, and I really thank them for that because that's a special tradition in our community. And Karen has helped facilitate visits to some of our businesses, and we're going on one this week to Boatright. Boatright Boat Marine, Boatright Marine. So that'll be fun, too, go to that, and thank you, Karen, for facilitating those things. And then the last thing is, there is an organization called Bay Area Alliance for Youth and Families, and they have been very involved in the Clear Creek Schools for years, and we have supported them for several years in Friendswood because they work with families and youth who need assistance to try to get our youth to make healthy choices with drug and alcohol, you know, staying away from those things, but to educate them and to help them make healthy choices. And, you know, you can't have a vibrant community and a safe place if we don't raise our youth right, correct? So they have a big fundraiser, and I don't know why I said yes, but because they're such a good charity. They have a Dancing With The Stars event in September, and I agreed to make a fool of myself for 90 seconds, along with the police chief and Webster Bowe. I tried to get our police chief, but they had already gotten him. And so you go online and you can vote. It costs a dollar to vote, but I don't wanna, you know, I'm the only person from Friendswood, so I'm representing Friendswood, so I'm expecting you guys and lady to help me out here. So I'm gonna pass these along, and if anybody in the audience wants them, I'll give them to you, too. I am soliciting for votes. I am soliciting for some votes.
You guys are doing some kind of a breakdance kind of thing?
I have no idea what we're doing yet. I have no idea. We just started this, but I can already tell you that I have deep regret. Deep regret. Would've rather just written a check, but I'm kind of committed now, and so I figure I've made a fool of myself for longer than 90 seconds, plenty of times, so this, you know, I can live through this one, too.
I'll just say that I want to congratulate Murad Kabiri. We just celebrated his one-year anniversary as our city manager, and I want to say what a great job Murad has come to do. Thank you. You stepped up and hit it out of the park, Murad, and I know you were under the tutelage of a pretty good city manager before you stepped in as our city manager now, but you really have done a magnificent job, and you've got a wonderful staff that you're leading, and great job all around.
Just a quick public announcement. Next Tuesday, May the 14th, the Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee will be having a workshop immediately following the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District meeting with the GLO. So if you would like to come, there'll be all the stakeholders along the Clear Creek Watershed that will be there, and we will be workshopping with the GLO. They're wanting some public information from us, and we're just gonna be meeting there. It's probably about nine, it takes about an hour, 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock for the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, and then immediately following that, we'll have that meeting, and then we'll have another Clear Creek Watershed Steering meeting after that. But that's all I have.
Great. John?
Two things real quick. I'd like to hitchhike off the mayor's comments. One-year anniversary for Murad being our city manager. I was here when we decided to create a position to, the assistant city manager position in an effort to hold on to Mo because we knew how valuable he would be to our community. And he's everything we thought he would be and more. He does anything that's asked of him. His ability to communicate with the staff and employees, as well as unbelievably with me even, is above and beyond. So, again, congratulations. The city is much, much better off having someone like you serve it. On the service side of it, I know there'll be another meeting coming up, May 13th, to canvass the election and stuff. For the people that volunteer to be a part of this governing body and to put yourself out there and subject yourself to everything that goes on through a campaign is a lot. And to do it in an election in a city where the pay is zero is really a lot. And so, you know, I heard of some of the goings-on and everything else, and how nasty campaigns can be and this and that and the other. I would just, for one, like to say, you know, for all of your badmouthing, try running for the position yourself, because so many like to sit back behind their computer and take cheap shots at people that, quite honestly, have volunteered their time for no money. No money. So, you know, over the last six years, Carl and I have not seen eye to eye on a lot of things, but that does not take away from his contributions to the city and his desire to serve our community. I hate the way the political landscape is today across this country, and when it gets this way in our own community, that's a problem. So for me personally, thank you for your service. I would look forward to working with Brent, working, coming forward. It's an awesome, humbling experience to be able to serve in your community and to be elected by the citizens. So good luck to Brent going forward. Thank you so much, Carl, for your efforts over the last six years, and I just hope in the future that elections remain civil.
Well, thank you very much, John. It's no secret, there was an election on Saturday, and it didn't work out too well for me. I've enjoyed my six years up here on council. I want to say thank you to everybody up here that I've served with. I want to thank staff, Mary Kay, Mo, Melinda up here, but all of you. I want to thank Parks and Rec. I want to thank the Police Department, Emergency Management, the Fire Department, our Finance Department, Economic Development. Folks who don't get to spend the time with city staff that I was able to spend over the six years really don't understand the gem that we have here. I know I didn't when I started. We've got some of the most capable, well-qualified people anywhere. There's just no place I wouldn't put them up against, and they've been a tremendous help to me over the years. I wouldn't have been able to do the job, half as good a job as I think I did, without their assistance. You can always depend on them, reliable.
You can always depend on them, reliable, accountable. I didn't get a lot of complaints as a city councilman, and I didn't get a lot of complaints because staff does a good job. I think, just really, thank you. And to those of you that supported me, I'm sorry it didn't work out a little differently, but thank you, and I guess I've got about two more votes up here, and that's gonna be it, but thanks a bunch, I appreciate it, loved every minute of it.
Do you have a motion you wanna make, Carl?
Do we need to do this?
You can do it anytime.
I'd like to make a motion that we provide our city manager with a raise of 5.5%.
Second, the motion.
All in favor? Hey.
Most approved. Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.